Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. In the room and on Zoom, noted that this meeting was given to the township clerk and posted on township bulletin board and township website calendar, and sent to the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noted to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No new matters will start up to 10:30 PM. Ask everybody to rise for the pleasure of the evening.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next planning board regular meetings will be held March 12, 2025, at 7:30 PM via Zoom. Ms. Capper, would you put up that link?
I got it.
Okay, Ms. Capper has an announcement?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you Chairman Bagoff. Just a quick announcement, I guess on behalf of our pedestrian safety board, Essex County is developing a safety action plan. The idea is to make streets safer for all road users. And so there are ways that they're inviting the community to take part in this. One is that there's this, and you can see it linked above. I think, I believe this information is also on our website and social media. There's a survey and map that you can click on that link and kind of, you can go on the map and make your suggestions known. You can map problem areas. And the county will be taking that information into account as they develop a safety plan. And there are also a couple of virtual community meetings. One of them is tomorrow night, actually, at 6:30 to 8:00. And then there's a second one on March the 4th. So please, yeah, if you have any suggestions that would make our roads safer, please take part. Thanks. Okay, yeah, thank you. Yeah, I don't know if everyone heard that. The virtual meetings are identical content, so they're both just opportunities for the community to make voices heard. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Capper. Yeah, I'm gonna let Ro call, please.
Mr. Alford?
Here.
Mr. Cardoza? Ms. Capper?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Wokes?
Here.
Councilwoman Scapa?
Here.
May McCarthy? Mr. Wayno?
Here.
Chairman Bagow?
Here, thank you. Ms. McGovern, will you swear in the township professionals, please?
Put your name on the record? Because you're not our typical.
Jordan Rizzo at CME.
Steve Martini from the Shuen Group.
Okay, if you please raise your right hand, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Okay, the application before us this evening, PB 24-01, West Essex Highlands Incorporated, Block 179, Lot 32, Zone IH1, Warner Road, the applicant is proposing a development of 496 unit inclusionary multifamily residential development on a vacant 120-acre property in the northwest corner of the township. Mr. Plock, you just want to put your attendance on the record?
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Brian Plocker from the firm of Hutch Manner, it's Mr. Plocker here on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Efron, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Ms. Chairman Bruce Efron, I'm counsel for the objector We Care New Jersey. We will be presenting two witnesses tonight. I understand the developer still has some witnesses to go who will come back, but in the interim, we're going to start with our witnesses. I don't think we'll be that long tonight. Both witnesses will be relatively short, depending, of course, on questions from the board and the public and Mr. Plocker. But we have Sean Walsh from Princeton Hydro, who is our first witness, who will be speaking to stormwater management issues. And we have Emile DeVito from the New Jersey Conservation Foundation, who will be speaking on forestry issues and related ecological questions.
Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you. Because Mr. Walsh needs to be near to Mr. Fagin's setup, we'll sit back here and help to present from over here.
Where are you in? Do you raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Well, could you introduce yourself, your academic and professional qualifications?
No problem.
I'll repeat that for the record. Is there a second mic for Mr. Walsh to use or are we using one?
You could stand up.
Let's use this, we'll share, okay.
You could bring your stuff up to the podium and use the mic up here if that works.
He's got to be linked, there's not enough physical wire room. Mr. Walsh, would you please describe for the board your academic and professional qualifications and associations?
Hello, I'm a professional engineer. I've been a professional engineer for about 15 years. I graduated Rutgers University with the degree in bio research and engineering for my bachelor's. I went back and got a degree in, a master's degree in civil engineering from Rutgers University. I'm also the stormwater municipal engineer responsible for reviewing the stormwater components of development plans for Reddington Township, Pepeck Ladstone Township, and Mendham Township in New Jersey. I also review plans for East Vincent Township in Pennsylvania.
Is your license current in the state of New Jersey?
It is current in the state of New Jersey, yes.
Unless anybody, any members of the board have any questions, we identify your evidence, I'm sorry. Mr. Plocker.
All right, I just, I know the board will have some leeway as they do with all witnesses, but the applicant would like to state an objection for the record. It's my understanding this witness is going to be addressing stormwater design. And as the board and everybody here is aware, my client did receive its DEP approvals, its DEP permit on November 15th of 2024. We'll listen to what he has to say, but it's going to be our contention that whatever's going to be discussed from this witness tonight is not within this board's purview. We have approvals from the DEP. If they want to take it up with the DEP, they can do that. They've already done that. We are in the appellate division. So I just wanted to state that and preserve that for the record.
Thank you. One second. So unless any member of the board has any questions, we accept Mr. Walsh as a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey.
Yeah, I just don't know if Mr. Walsh mentioned he is employed by Princeton Hydro. That's just as further qualification. Just in terms of Mr. Plocker's objection, I understood he would make that statement. It is on appeal, and there are three towns that filed an initial challenge, may file an appeal. And it's our contention that the board does have an independent duty to assure itself that qualifications in this field are met in terms of stormwater management. That may be a legal dispute, but in addition, because the developer offered testimony in this field, it's very proper for us to respond.
Go right ahead, sir.
Well, I just wanted to say one thing about the DEP approving the plan. The township still has its own responsibility to review and approve the plan to make sure it meets the local ordinance. And the MS4 permit is pretty clear that if something is wrong and it was missed in the review process, the town can be held accountable, not the DEP. And that's why it's important for the town to do their own independent review. And I know of at least one instance where something was missed in the planning board, something got built, and then the town was held accountable to make the repairs to the system. So, these things are always more expensive to fix once they are built than when they are on paper, so.
Thank you. Go right ahead, sir.
Mr. Walsh will present his presentation. I may interject occasionally with questions.
Thank you.
All right, I want to thank you very much for your time. I'll try to be efficient. Sorry. Thank you for your time. I want to try to be as efficient as I can. I appreciate it. All right, the first thing I would like to talk about is the soil logs that were provided as part of the submission package. Now, DEP requires soil logs to be performed to learn more about the site. They're really important part of the initial analysis part of a project. Soil logs can tell us important things about the site. They'll tell us where the seasonal high water table is. They'll tell us what the infiltration rates are for the different areas of the site. And they can also tell us what kind of soils are underneath the surface. These are all important aspects of the project that'll limit how you can build your design. Sorry, it limits how you build your design because, for example, the seasonal high water table, you have to have all your BMPs at least two feet above it. Now, what was interesting, and I have one of the soil logs on the board here, is you identify seasonal high water table through two processes. You dig a hole and you look for water coming out of the ground, but then you also look for something called modeling. Is anyone familiar with the term modeling? It's, I want to take that as a no. It's a coloration that occurs in the soil. And that's what you could also use to identify the seasonal high water table. What's important about that is that seasonal high water table fluctuates on a daily basis, based on how often it rained, when was the last time it rained. But the modeling doesn't change. The modeling is built on years and years of the water always changing. So the modeling is what can show you what truly is the seasonal high water table. And what's unusual about these soil logs, and they took a lot of soil logs for the site, is that there's never any mention of modeling, ever. And in the DEP BMP manual, it explicitly says that you should use modeling where present to identify where the seasonal high water table is, because once again, the water elevations can change every day. So the chances that you dig a hole and where the water is highest level is very low. So that's the first thing that I want to call into question with some of the, with the data that was presented here. They only state where the seasonal high water table is where they find water. But the odds are that they're underestimating where the seasonal high water table is. And that is already an immediate concern because that's one of the initial site constraints of how deep you can make your basins. If you can't make them deep, you have to make them wide, so it can have a big impact on your sites. Here. Let me just go through windows. All right. All right, and just to hammer on the point a little bit more, for example, oh, my screen fell asleep, I'm sorry.
Mr. Efron, can I ask, while you're trying to figure this out, is the Princeton Hydro report of November 15th, 2024, is that what you're referring to with the tables?
I refer, these are the soil boring logs that were presented by the applicant.
Okay.
Okay. That letter was just a review of their submission.
Perfect. I just want to be clear for the record.
No, that's no problem.
Thank you.
Is there a date that you can identify so later in looking at the record, we can have a reference point, a date to those or a number?
There's three dates. There's three different reports they submitted. One is dated April 19th, 2021. One is dated February 12th, 2024, and then the third one is dated April 4th, 2024.
Thank you.
All right, and some of the designs they presented here are at the bare minimum separation for seasonal high water table. So immediately there is a concern that, you know, if they're underestimating the seasonal high water elevation, now something, if we went back and we could look at modeling, we might find that there's not enough space and this is already not compliant with the DEP regulations. And I would think that the geotechnical engineer who did these should provide some testimony as to why modeling is absent from any of these reports. It's very unusual. I've seen plenty of these. The DEP manual is very explicit that there should be discussion of what the modeling is.
Could I just note for the record, it's a minor point. I think Mr. Walsh was referring to modeling as an MOTT, not MOD as in David, modeling.
The change in coloration of the soil.
Yes, so for the record and the reporter's benefit, it's MOTT.
ELING.
ELING, yes.
My apologies, I should have said that. All right, next, I would like to talk about, we reviewed all the soil boring to confirm that they did have the space necessary for the seasonal high from the bottom of the storage basins to the seasonal high water table. And unfortunately, during our review, we found that they actually missed some of it. In their reports and in their plans, they do cite some of the boring, but they don't cite all of them. And there were from instances where they missed previous reports. So I would like to now look at previous pavement section four. Let's see, that's on page 25. So what we're looking at now is the construction drawings that the applicant had submitted. This is a cross-section of horse pavement four. All right, so you'll see they reference seasonal high water table at 567. Now, what they did here is they used the reports from 2024 to reference the seasonal high water table. But if you look back at their previous reports in 2021, you'll find that seasonal high was found at a higher elevation. All right, here, test pit number 10, the seasonal high water level was found just three feet below the grade. The surface elevation was 57, 573.
Now, will you show us the other elevation that you say is distinct?
Yes.
The location of test pit number 10? This is the location of test pit number 10, and this is the location of the horse pavement number four. So you can see the close proximity to it, but they never make reference to it in their plans. I think it's something they missed. But scroll back down now. You can see here, the seasonal high water table, based on test pit number 10, is in the storage area space. It's not down here at 567. Right now, this storage basin isn't compliant. In fact, right now, this area here, it's called clean storage bed. This is where the horse pavement would hold and retain water. That's going to be filled up mostly with seasonal high water table. So it's not going to have the storage that the plan is predicting. The base is going to overflow quicker. The peak flows are going to come out of it quicker, and it's going to be an issue. Now, I'd like to point out two more plans, two more instances of this for horse pavement number six. Okay, again here, they reference two test pits, test pits 42 and 43. But what they forgot to do is again to look at the 2021 plan and showed a different story. There, there's another test pit, test pit number four, that shows the elevation much higher. It shows it about 10 feet higher. Actually, it's higher than the grade elevation they show. So let me, let me go to that plan.
Which screen are you showing now?
Now, I'm going to show the plan to show you the reference points of the test pits, and then I'll show the soil boring to confirm the elevation difference. This is the location of test pit number four. This is harder to do with one hand. They referenced, now, these are test pits 43 and 42. These are the ones they referenced to show the seasonal high water table. I like to go here. Seasonal high, the ground surface elevation here was at 610, test pit number four. Seasonal high water table was found. Sorry, one second, I got my notes a little confused. Oh, no, sorry, I forgot, there is an error here on this report. Now, it doesn't say there's seasonal high water table here, but it notes seepage at two feet. Seepage of, that means the groundwater is leaking through the sidewalls of the test pit, which would mean you've hit seasonal high water table. So I'd like to revert back to this plan now. So here, which is slightly different location than the other two test pits, but the groundwater is only two feet below surface elevation, which is 608. I'm going to go back to the profile now to show you where the seasonal high water table would be in that profile. The grade elevation is at 50, they're calling it 508. This profile changes a bit, but right now seasonal high is above the surface of the pavement. Again, the storage area here in this parking lot, it's not going to be used. It's going to be taken up by the seasonal high water table. At least that's what we can tell from now. So again, the basin is going to be overwhelmed earlier than we think. It's not going to be able to infiltrate. The peak flows are going to increase.
And this is the drawing, as it says on the screen, for basin six outlets, basin outlet structure number six. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, it is. And this is where I want to point out again in my earlier point where, you know, these are the seasonal high elevations that we got from a presence of water. It's not what the matting was. So these elevations could even be slightly higher, which could exacerbate the problem that we're seeing already. All right, I have one more example here, and then I'll move on. I'm going to go to basin number nine. All right. All right, and basin number nine, it says the seasonal high water table is at 548 for test pit number six. Now, we're going to go to test pit number six. This is actually the 2004 test pits. Now, on this report, it says the service grade elevation was 574. Says the water elevation, that's what they're saying, is where they found seasonal high water is eight feet below that. That's 568. Plan here claims that it's 20 feet lower than was found in the grade. So once again, the seasonal high water table is going to be much higher. It's going to fill up the storage area of this basin. It's not going to hold rainwater. It's not going to detain. It's not going to be able to lower a peak flow elevation. It's going to increase flooding. So these are three instances where we found that seasonal high elevation, seasonal high water table is higher in the documents than what they show on the plan. It shows that the plant, these designs are not compliant, and that they could risk increasing runoff and accessory flooding downstream.
Want to note for the record, this diagram on the screen is basin outlet structure number nine.
All right, the next thing I want to talk about is with soil boring logs, that DP in their chapter five of their BMP manual, which is the guidance document they provide engineers to help design stormwater infrastructure according to their standards, they have rules about how many test pits you're supposed to dig for every basin or underground structure you're going to do. And it's mostly based on the size of the structure. So they have a minimal of two. And then the larger the structure gets, the more they want you to dig test pits for. Because as you could see in the first example I gave with previous pavement number four, there's a lot, there can be a lot of variation. So you want to dig lots of different test pits to make sure you capture the entire picture, because you don't miss anything. We did note that not all of the, not enough test pits were dug for all of the BMPs. For BMPs number five, six, eight, nine, and 10, they were one test pit short. And for BMP seven, they should have dug three test pits. They only dug one that was compliant. Now, you might be thinking, well, Sean's being a stickler. There's only one. But again, with previous pavement number four, there can be a lot of variation. Some of these are very large basins. And it is important to be able to capture the entire story of what's going on underneath the ground for these basins. So you don't have a mistake, and you can make sure you have the capacity that you're designing for. So that would, so that actually notes that six of the 12 basins did not have the sufficient number of test pits that they were supposed to have. All right, next, I would like to talk about groundwater mounding. Groundwater mounding is the process of, you have seasonal high water tables. It's on this level here. During a rain, I'm sorry, I'm just pointing, using my hand, that should be more clear. It's on a level, right? It rains, when you have a concentrated area of infiltration like a basin, it'll mound a little bit. It's a normal process. The DP has a form and some calculations you have to fill out to make sure the mound doesn't get too far or perhaps get into someone's basin by accident. I'm sure everyone is familiar with that experience. When it rains, groundwater arises, you have mounting. So they make you feel, they provide a form, you have to fill it out and demonstrate that you're not mounting anywhere to cause any issues. Now, typically, you have to do this for the water quality storm. And, you know, the applicant provided all the forms for that, and it was compliant. But what the applicant does do in some of these basins is they use infiltration as a way of keeping flow, reducing the peak flow runoff rate. So that's, they're not just passing the water through the pipe, they're pushing the water through the ground. So in those situations, you also have to do the groundwater mounding for the 100-year storm. Because the DP wants to see not just the small storms, but they want to see what happens during the larger storms. To give you an idea of perspective, the water quality storm is about an inch and a quarter. The eight-year, the 10-year, sorry, the 100-year storm is eight inches of rain. So it's a much more significant amount of rainfall, and so the mounting can be significantly different. All right, we're looking at section of horse pavement number three from the applicant's design plan.
For the record, this is the diagram headed basin outlet structure number three.
It's a profile section, horse pavement number three, sorry. So it's a cross-section or a profile of the horse pavement system. So do you have finished grade of the pavement, a choker course of stone, you have stone storage, and now you have soil replacement permeability, and that soil replacement permeability ends at the seasonal high water table. What happened here?
You mean the bottom line of the soil section or the top line?
The bottom of the soil replacement ends at the elevation of the seasonal high water table. Okay. So what they did here was, when they did the soil boring, when they did all their soil tests, they measured infiltration rates as well, because they needed to know how quickly the water would go into the ground as part of their mounting calculations. And what they found was- And what they found was that this ground doesn't have great infiltration rates, which is not unusual or unexpected for this area. So what they, what they chose to do is they chose to replace that soil. They would dig deeper than the bottom of the basin and replace that soil with sand material that has a much higher infiltration rate. It allows the basin to go down, to go down quicker, get rid of that water quality storm. Here's the problem with them. And it works with the water quality storm. And that's why their mounting was fine and we didn't have any issues. But the issue is here, so the sand here, you can see, it says it has an eight inches per hour infiltration rate, which is fantastic. But when you get down to this soil, that's when the soil infiltration rate is becomes point-two-five inches per hour. This is effectively a wall. So what you need to demonstrate is that when you're infiltrating the hundred-year storm, you have to show whatever you're promising to infiltrate, you can hold that water in here. That come, that you don't have any, because your groundwater mounting is not supposed to go into your storage. It's supposed to get down and not interfere with the storage of your basins. So if you're asking, Sean, how do you do that? What we can do is we can go to the model. What we would do is we look at their model. We decide, we show, they show how much water they're going to infiltrate during a hundred-year storm. Now, let me, I'm going to go to their model, just one moment.
At this point, you mean model as in M-O-D-E-L?
Yeah, the stormwater model, M-O-D-E-L. Okay, right now, we're looking at the stormwater report that was provided by the applicant. This is for, it's called basin number three. That's what they call porous pavement section number three. Because it effectively is an underground stormwater basin. You'll see here, this is kind of a, they use the modeling software Hydro, HydroCAD, it gives a nice summary of the different volumes. The discarded section is the infiltration. It's discarded because it doesn't go into any other pipes. It just, it kind of goes away, they disappear. Alright, so they say that during the one-hundred-year storm, which is shown right here, that they're going to infiltrate ten, uh, ten thousand nine hundred and seventy-one cubic feet of water. So now, we have to translate that into a height, because we're looking at a profile. Thankfully, right on the same page, it gives the surface area of the basin, which is five thousand two hundred and twenty-seven. So if you divide the ten thousand number by the two, by the five thousand number, you roughly get two feet of water. So that means you're going to have two feet of standing water in that basin, that they've got to hold below the storage. I'm going to go back to the plant, now, I'm going to go back to the plan. Okay, so now you, what you're thinking is, alright, well, Sean, what are you talking about? Right here, it says two feet, no problem. That's two feet full of sand. We were talking about two feet of vertical, of just plain vertical water. So you had to fit the water with the sand. Sand typically has what you call a void ratio of point-four, which means if you have, you know, one cubic foot of sand, if forty percent of it is empty space. So you would take that two feet of water and you would divide it by point-four. And that's how high, that's the height you would have of water with sand. When you divide the two, it's two-point-one, so you divide two-point-one by point-four, you get five-point-two-five feet of water. It's, at this point, it's going to exceed the height of the pavement. Again, the water being held, the water is going to get trapped by this slow infiltrating soil. It's going to build up in the sand, it's going to get, exceed the sand depth. It's going to fill up this void space in the, in the storage area and more water is going to go through the pipe. The peak flow rates that they show in the models aren't correct. It's going to capture, the, the storage is going to, sorry, the runoff is going to go more through the pipes because it's going to run into this wall.
What happens when it goes through the pipe?
When it goes to the pipes, the peak flow rate, what they report in the model is inaccurate. It's under. It's going to be higher, which means like they have limitations on how high they can make the peak flow runoff for these developed sites. It's supposed to be less than what exists. And right now, for this situation, it's going to be higher for the larger storms. Now, we saw, now, I used the porous pavement section number three. We saw the same instance in porous pavement, porous pavement section number four, five, six, basin seven, eight, nine, and basin ten. So now, I'm not going to go through all of these because I respect your time, but I wanted to go through that detailed example. And it wasn't always this extreme, but in those basins, the stormwater, it's going to affect the peak flow runoff rate, which is really crucial because we do have flooding downstream. And we have to meet certain peak flow rate reductions. And what they're reporting is, it's not what's going to happen in reality. These basins are going to be constrained with it, by their storage from too much flow, too much runoff being trapped. And we're going to have higher peak flow runoff rates.
What does that translate into in terms of practical items?
It means that the water is not going to get infiltrated like the model says. It means there's going to be more, more water in the pipes, more water going downstream. And you could potentially be increasing the, increasing the water coming off the site than reducing it, which is what you're supposed to do according to the standards. And if you increase the runoff, you can get flooding, or you can get more flooding. Alright, I would like to take, now that we've talked a lot about seasonal high water table, I would like to take a moment and talk about runoff in general.
Just identify the screen if I can. It says-
One second, I'm sorry. Let the referee join the board. Sorry, Mr. Referee, go right ahead.
Nah, I'm sorry. May I go ahead? I, it says on the bottom, figure one, proposed grading plan. And then it has additional words with blue arrows showing the existing drainage path and the red arrows showing the proposed drainage paths and how the runoff is being diverted from the wetlands. I'm just reciting that so we have a reference point.
This figure is from the letter that we submitted that's on the agenda to the DP based on our review of the applicant's submission.
Eight oh-five that we've marked this November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four?
Yes. Alright, so what I did here was I took a, a plan that the applicant had provided and I superposed some arrows to give some direction here. So, what I wanted to talk about was how the wetlands were going to be affected by this development. The blue arrows show the direction of the runoff in the existing condition. So they, basically they travel perpendicular to the contour lines and you can see the runoff up here contributes to the wetlands up here and so forth, like runoff that runs here, runs parallel, and it feeds a continuous line of the wetlands over here. Same with over here and over here. It's, there's no rerouting as the runoff is spread equally. Now, the-
Are the, the blue arrows, are they reflecting present conditions on the site before development?
Yes, they're, they are showing present conditions at the site. So now, what I also have here is the red arrows. The red arrows show how the water that lands on the, the developed area will be rerouted due to the stormwater system. So for example, in this section here, in the existing conditions, the blue point this way. Now the red arrow points towards the street. The stormwater runoff would be captured by the parking lot, put into stormwater pipes, it'll travel down the road and it'll go into these basins. Same with over here and same with over here. So instead of kind of equally distributing the runoff to the entire wetlands, a large portion, a portion of the land, runoff that used to go here is now going to be rerouted. It's going to avoid these upper wetlands and it's going to go into this basin and get discharged down here. So the drainage area for these basins are going to, for drainage area for these wetlands are going to change due to the development. Alright, what I like to do then is show-
Now, you just referred to the upper wetlands. You were referring to the left side of the diagram. Is it fair to say that the same would apply to the wetlands in the center and on the right side of the diagram?
Uh, yes, that is true. Alright, so this is an existing drainage area map that the applicant provided in their submission. What I did was I superimposed rough drainage areas for the wetlands and for this point of discharge, which the, was, point of analysis was used in their model. And I'm just trying to demonstrate the drainage area that feeds the wetlands for these two areas.
For the record, the area to the right-left is a dark green color. The area to the right is a light green color. And obviously, if anyone sees a black and white version, I wanted to define the two color sections. This is a newer document with Mr. Walsh's color additions, superimposed on a document already in the record. So at some point, we should mark this as an objectors exhibit, I believe.
Alright.
You didn't submit it to us. Okay. Alright, so let's we're going to call that one oh-eight because we already got submissions from you earlier tonight, today, that we today, the Princeton hydro report we've labeled oh-five. The CV from Mr. DeVito is oh-six. And the color diagram that you sent was oh-seven. So this will be oh-eight and we will call this colorized.
I would suggest we might call it color, yeah, as I was going to say, DA one, colorized DA one.
Alright.
Can we just make it clear for the record, I know you say DA one, but this is something that my client submitted. Can we just get clear on the record that this is something that was colorized by the objectors witness? And if we could get a date, I just want to make clear for the record that this originally was our document.
Call it colorized DA one exhibit from objector. Alright.
We, we agree the original document was submitted by the applicant.
Colorized version.
Colorized version.
Yeah, is the, okay, so DA one colorized from the object, by the objector.
Yes.
He didn't change the shape or size of the areas. Just colored them in. Is that correct?
No, no, I, I drew the drainage area for the wetlands there. So I drew in that green area. I didn't colorize it. I used the contours that he had and those green areas are drawn by me. Sorry for the confusion.
Alright, I'm just going to call green.
What was it before you drew that on there? What was that drawing?
It was DA one, as was submitted by the applicant. What Mr. Walsh has done is he's used the contour lines on the original exhibit to demonstrate two drainage areas on the, on the, on the existing site as shown as it existing conditions. So in other words, the contour lines reflect where water will move. And Mr. Walsh has created the two drainage areas that he discerns based on the contour lines on the site as they exist today. Is that correct, Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Hasn't changed anything.
He hasn't changed any of the existing contour lines. He simply identified where on the document the two drainage areas exist.
Uh, let me, let me, I think I, so, no, 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 let me explain. What they show on this map is the drainage area of the disturbed area. So what I did was I used the coloring to show what would feed the entire wetland. That's, that was the difference.
Yours is existing, theirs is proposed?
These are, this is both, this is both existing. You don't-
I think I understand. What, what's I think happening is that on the original version, the drainage area showed by the applicant was reflecting the area of disturbance and drainage from that area. Mr. Walsh has shown drainage areas more broadly as they exist on the site. So he showed, he's shown other drainage areas, not just drainage from the area of proposed disturbance. Is that, Mr. Walsh, is that a fair summary or am I incorrect?
Yeah, that, I wanted to show you the original one, the original DA that they had here, where they point out, they, they have this discharge point. Their only concern, they show the drainage area for the disturbed area. I was showing what's feeding the entire wetland. That's why I had to color it. That's why I used the colorization.
Is that, is that because there's other wetlands that are affected? So you're showing the effect with all of the different wetlands?
I wanted to show everything that's feeding the wetland, not just what was disturbed.
And how they're affecting each other.
Yeah, how, how that interacts. Sorry for the confusion.
Let me just note that-
I was attempting to answer the questions, but obviously Mr. Shaun's opinion is authoritative, not mine. So his description obviously governs to the extent I differed, Mr. Shaun, Mr. Walsh is the expert.
Alright, now, the area on the left is about thirty-two acres and the area on the right is about forty-eight-point-four acres. Now, I'm going to show you one more figure for this. My computer can load it up. There we go. Let me get a little closer. No, here. This-
What's on the screen now is a colorized version of DA two and Mr. Walsh will explain.
Alright, you can see here, now we're looking at a proposed drawing. And what I did was I once again drew the drainage areas that would feed the wetlands. And I wanted to show how that would change. You can see how I excluded the developed areas, because those are no longer contributing to these wetlands over here, over here, or down in these areas, because the flow is being routed to the basins at the bottom of the, at the bottom of the site. And what we wanted to just show was that there was a reduction in the drainage area to the wetlands. On this side, the drainage area was reduced by about nine acres, which is twenty-eight percent reduction.
Green to the left side.
Sorry, yeah, the left side that is darker green. And on the right side that is lighter green, that was a reduction of about sixteen acres, which is a thirty-three percent reduction. I just wanted to point that out and that there would be an impact to the wetlands.
Okay, this is another new exhibit?
This is a new exhibit.
This is going to be oh-nine and we'll have to get that one submitted to us.
Okay.
So it's colorized DA two.
Alright, next I would like to talk about time of concentration. Time concentration is a bit of a technical term, but it's a very important term. The time of concentration is the time it takes for a piece of, for water to go from, say, the highest point on the watershed down to the discharge point. It's the time, and then that, that time is very important. That time helps dictate the peak flow runoff, especially in an existing conditions model, because once again, that's a constraint. When you develop the existing conditions, you know what, what's flowing off the site in the existing conditions and DP will require you to meet reduction rates. So you're not trying, so you're not causing flooding further downstream. No, this is an old document. This is this is DA one from the, from the report submitted by the applicant.
So this is not a colorized version. This is original DA one. Is that correct?
So the only difference is I put two scaled measurements on here, just to show a difference that I will get to in maybe ten minutes. uh, just to show a difference that I will get to in maybe 10 minutes.
So, uh, since it's on the screen, it's on the document, I think we should probably make it oh 10, which is DA one with, uh, colorized red arrows. Is that in your description?
That's what he had? Just the red hours?
Ju- just, that was all I added and I, you'll see why in like maybe five minutes or something like that.
Okay.
All right. Um, now time concentration is, as I said, it's how the water flows through to get to the end of the discharge location. Water flows to different and can flow in different ways. There's something called sheet flow and it's called shallow concentrated flow. Uh, sheet flows, like you imagine, um, if there's a field and it starts to rain, the kind of water moves as like a sheet along the ground. Now, as the water progresses and it builds up, it'll actually start to consolidate and it'll be called something called shallow concentrated flow. Now the DP has rules on how you calculate that. That's all outlined out in chapter five and the BNP manual. And what we found was when we looked at the way the applicant had calculated was unfortunately, it seemed like they had used an older version of how to calculate time of concentration. The, uh, the rules and the the methods that allow, that we're supposed to use to calculate time concentration has changed over time. And unfortunately, from what we can, from we've tell, we can tell is that they use the older version. And this older version generated an, a lower time of concentration. So let me give you, I'm going to use the shallow concentrated flow as an example. Now kind of the dead giveaway is you can see here where this says shallow concentrated flow unpaved. Now, a little while, it wasn't that long ago, um, but there was an unpaved option where you would basically take the slope of the land and you say it was unpaved because this is a forest and they give you a flow rate. They don't do that now. Now they have a more complicated chart. They're like, all right, tell us exactly what this land is. Is it, is it a forest? Is it grass? Is it a farm field? And based on the slope, you, they'll give you a specific, uh, flow rate. So.
If I can answer one question. So it's not a generalized unpaved area flow rate. Now there's a specific flow rate based on the slope and the specific type of topography.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. All right. So what I did was I went back and I went to the manual and I decided to recalculate the shallow concentrated time. Now their shallow concentrated time for, uh, this area was 7.2 minutes. Now I went back and I used the charts and I said, all right, this is a heavy, it's a forested area with heavy litter. Uh, it's got the same slope, 5.4%. And using the charts, that says that it's got a velocity of 0.55 feet per second. Now you divide, uh, 1,625 feet by 0.55 feet per second, you get 2,954 seconds or 49 minutes. Now, what they're saying is that it took seven minutes, but based on the new method, it's taking 49 minutes, which means it's about seven times longer than what they're saying. Now I did this again for POA two. Sorry, uh, let me take a step back. There's this drainage area. And then there's another drainage area over here. You can tell by the distinction of the two different blue lines, which are time of concentrations. We also did it for POA two, um, using the shallow concentrated flow.
That's on, and that's on the right side.
That's on the right side of the chart of the, of the plan. And so it's, they have, let's see if I can read, 564 linear feet at unpaved, 9.2, uh, the 9.2% uh, slo- uh, slope. According to their model and their calculations, that takes 1.9 minutes. And again, I went back to the chart uh, in the manual, I recalculated that, uh, the velocity for a heavily forested area uh, at 9.2% slope. And what I got was 12 and a half minutes. And again, that's about a seven fold increase in the time of concentration. All right. Now you're probably wondering, all right, time of concentration, it's different. Now, what does that do? How does that impact the design? The shorter the concentrate, the time of concentration, typically the higher the peak flow rate you have because it's, the, the water is traveling through a certain amount of time. So the longer it is, the lower your peak flow rates are. Now it's really important to establish the correct peak flow rate off the existing conditions because that's going to set the, the benchmark for what your design is going to be. Because the DP will require you to reduce the, your runoff, your peak flow rate from, uh, your design. So, uh, DP is going to require like the two-year peak flow runoff rate is going to have to be 50% less than what's existing. For the 10-year storm, it's going to have to be 25% less. For the 100-year storm, it's going to have to be 20%, uh, 70, 10-year storm is 25% less. The 10, 100-year storm is 20% less. So now the thing about a peak flow rate is it's easier to meet those reductions the higher your rates are. Because it's just more water pat. You don't have to hold as much water. You don't have to have as much of a base. So, you know, you always hope when you do the math, you're like, give me a big, uh, existing flow, make my life easy. But it's already here where because they're miscalculating it, we're already getting a misrepresentation of what the peak flow is for the existing condition. So we're risking not reducing the flow as much as we should be.
And what does that translate into in terms of practical outcomes?
It can mean that more water is going to come off the site than it does and you can risk flooding further downstream. Because now the site isn't holding back water, it could actually be generating more runoff. So if you have an issues with flooding downstream, now you're exacerbating that problem because you just developed this land and now you're producing even more runoff instead of less. The point of those regulations for reducing peak flow is that it should not have an impact further downstream. We don't want to, we have, you have to build things, we have to develop land sometimes, but you don't want to have to flood, flood your downstream neighbors.
Walsh.
I've been a little technical here and I just want to like kind of use an analogy to maybe make it a little simpler. Sorry, my screen fell asleep for a second. Um, suppose I, I'm, I'm a basketball fan. Suppose I, I saw someone go dunk a basketball and he said, yeah, I can dunk basketballs. And, but then you, you kind of went closer up to the net and you brought a tape measure to it and you're like, wait a minute, it's an eight foot tall net. You can't, basketballs are 10 feet tall. And that's what's kind of happening here. It's you're artificially shortening the time of concentration to meet these requirements. So. All right. Now I want to go a little further on, this was something.
One quick, one, what year did that change from using that general unpaved to?
I don't know that off the top of my, I can get back to you, but I, I do not know that right off the top of my head.
Do you, do you know if, when they did their calculations, that was correct at the time?
No, I'm sure it was. I'm sure it wasn't.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I hate to burden the board. Could I ask for a two-minute break?
Sorry?
I hate to burden the board. Could I ask for a two-minute break?
You got a two-minute break off the record.
Back on the record. Mr. Ephraim, Mr. Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the break and, um, we will continue with Mr. Walsh.
All right. Um, thank you very much. Okay. So we had just finished talking about how the time of concentration after we use the current method is longer, which means the flow rates should be lower than originally calculated in the applicant's submission. I wanted to point out something with, uh, POA two here. Well, you can see the blue line here and the, this is where they show the flow path as they do in POA one here. This is the path that goes from the top of the base, top of the drainage area down to the bottom.
You're tracing a line that's parallel to those red arrows.
Yes, it's parallel to those red arrows. And you'll see their, that path total is about 671 feet long. And what's unusual here is if you compare it to the other watershed model, uh, drainage area to the, to the left, POA one, the blue line goes all the way to the discharge point, which is what it's supposed to do. But, but for some reason they stop it short. It stops here. But the drainage, the discharge point is here. The, the time of concentration is supposed to measure the entire flow length. So this, this water should keep going down here, go around, keep going. At a minimum, it's 700 feet short. So there's 700 feet of flow path that isn't accounted for in the time of concentration calculation. And again, this is just another example of how like the basketball rim gets artificially shortened. Cause now it's traveling less, less distance than it really is. So again, the time of concentration will be, will be shorter, the peak flows will be higher. And it'll be easier to be, oh, batter's rank. Uh, I have my.
For the record, the battery was running low, Mr. Walsh.
Back on the record. Mr. Ephraim, Mr. Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the break and we will continue with Mr. Walsh.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, so we had just finished talking about how the time of concentration after we use the current method is longer, which means the flow rates should be lower than originally calculated in the applicant submission. I wanted to point out something with P O A two here. Well, you can see the blue line here and this is where they show the flow path as they do in P O A one here. This is the path that goes from the top of the base, top of the drainage area down to the bottom.
You're tracing a line that's parallel to those red arrows.
Yes, it's parallel to those red arrows. You'll see their, that path total is about six hundred and seventy-one feet long. And what's unusual here is if you compare it to the other watershed model, drainage area to the, to the left, P O A one, the blue line goes all the way to the discharge point, which is what it's supposed to do. But for some reason, they stop it short. It stops here. But the drainage, the discharge point is here. The, the time of concentration is supposed to measure the entire flow length. So this, this water should keep going down here, go around, keep going. At a minimum, it's seven hundred feet short. So there's seven hundred feet of flow path that isn't accounted for in the time of concentration calculation. And again, this is just another example of how like the basketball rim gets artificially shortened. Cause now it's traveling less, less distance than it really is. So again, the time of concentration will be sh- will be shorter, the peak flows will be higher and it'll be easier to be, oh, batter's right. Uh, I have my.
For the record, the battery was running low on Mr. Walsh's computer and he's about to charge it.
All right. Sorry about that. So once again, this is just another example of how the time of concentration calculation, it's not even complete here. You know, they used the wrong method and now they're not even using the full distance. So it just cannot be trusted. So.
So let me ask one question. Accepting what you just said, what does this translate into in terms of practical outcomes that the board should be concerned about?
So to demonstrate that, what I did was we used the information that was available from the applicant submission and we recalculated the existing conditions model using the Hydra, using HydroCAD, which is the model they used to develop new peak flow runoff rates and compare them to what they have in their report to see how big of the difference is because this became, I mean, it's the wrong method. It's less than half the distance. We were concerned what were the result, what were the impacts of that going to be? All right. So I gotta go through my notes to make sure I get all these numbers correct. So the applicant submission shows that time of concentration is sixteen point eight minutes. Our calculations have it closer to sixty, have it about sixty point eight minutes, which is about four times longer, more time. Three and a half times me. Um, now, for example, for the two-year storm, we calculated that the peak flow runoff rate was seven point five two. Now I want to go, uh, one second. I'm going to go to the report, the applicant submitted.
What was that figure you just said?
I were looking at page eleven of the applicant's storm drainage report. It summarizes the discharge rates that they calculated for the proposed and existing conditions. And I just want to compare them to the R, our findings. So, um, the existing, for the two-year storm, they have an existing flow rate of seventeen point five. Now we calculated as seven point five two, which is ten cubic feet per second more than we have. So again, this is, this demonstrates how much higher it is. Now, if you're looking at this table, it says stormwater, it says storm here in this row. That means the storm size. Basically, uh, this X is existing. This per is permitted. So remember when I discussed how the two-year storm, you have to reduce, you had to reduce your peak flow by fifty percent? And then for the 10-year storm, you have to reduce it by twenty-five percent. For the hundred-year storm, you have to reduce it by twenty percent. That's what this permission is. It's taking the existing flow that they calculated and showing what they're allowed to permit.
This is shown from the applicant's page eleven.
This is the applicant's page eleven. Yes. All right. Um, now the T, the total, this is the last column. It totals all the other flows in this to give the total flow, which is the target flow that they need to meet. So they show the peak flow rate for the two-year storm is seven point two four. Now they meet it under their terms, but if you take, remember, we calculated the existing two-year storm at seven point five. You'd have to have that, which is about three point seven six. So right now their peak flow is twice what it should be. So once again, they would need to go back, look at their basins, look at their models, make everything bigger to hold more water back because they're discharging too much water right now. And I want to point out that on top, this is on top of some of the other things we found where some of the basins are getting impacted by mounding, that they're not going to hold as much as they and they're also impacted by the height of the seasonal, seasonal high water table. So we already know from the earlier discussion that these peak flow, the, the peak flow rates that they're giving are artificially low. And now we know that, you know, their bar is too high, their, their bar needs to be lower. The, the site's going to generate more runoff than we think it is. Final, uh, so I'd also just, I want to go through it for the 100-year storm as well for to, for one more point. So their peak flow runoff rate for the existing condition is eighty-three point four. We calculated it at thirty-seven point six. What's important to point out here is in the hundred-year storm, with, with their predicting their flow rate will be is thirty-eight point nine nine. That's what they're, after they build the entire development, that's what's going to come out.
That's what they say.
That's what they say. That's higher than what we're calculating is happening right now. So that means that in the hundred-year storm, this site is going to generate more runoff than it does right now today, which will definitely exacerbate any flooding problems that happen downstream. Cause the existing conditions based on our measurements are thirty-seven point seven and they're at thirty-eight point nine nine. I, I know these are a lot of numbers. I do appreciate your patience with it all. All right. Um, I'm going to go back to one moment. Go back to this plan, rotate my view. There's one more thing we want to bring up about P O A two, which is a little strange. Um, we're still in the storm drainage report that the applicant provided. Uh, this is D A two. So P O A two is right here. This is the final, it's the point of analysis. It's the, the point where all the water leaves the site. It's important for analysis, for the storm analysis to make sure you're not discharging more water. What's strange about this is that that's not where all the water goes. The water has two discharge locations. It comes from basin two and it discharges to Kuzic Street, but it also comes from basin seven and it goes to Warner Street. But for some reason, this report treats them as two, it's not two distinct locations, but as one, they're, they're assumed to be combined. But it's ignoring the flow from Kuzic, what the flow of Kuzic could be. What you're supposed to do is you're supposed to analyze both points. So you don't have a situation where you're discharging more water coming into one street as opposed to the other. For example, we don't really know how the flow is re-diverted based on the land development. If now maybe the drainage area that would normally go to Kuzic is much larger and they need to counter, they need to have their design take that into effect. Or is it larger over here? They're just kind of summing this up and we lose that in the detail. I'm going to scroll to D A one again.
Yeah. Is, is your testimony that we have a single figure of discharge from the detention basins as a, for both instead of separate figures for each?
Yes, the model treats those discharges as, as combined when they, they don't combine. They, they're two distinct flow rates. What we should, what I would imagine should happen is this larger drainage area should be split into two different drainage areas. And so these individual points can be analyzed individually to ensure that the flow at Kuzic and at Warner are not increased. All right. Uh, I have just two more points. Uh, all right. Um, I would like to talk about the inland flood, uh, flooding regulation rules that the D E P used recently. Now it's, uh, I understand, um, that this project, uh, was grandfathered in and it wasn't, it wasn't held to the standard of the new inland flooding rules. And for those who are unfamiliar, the inland flood rules are, are basically meant to try to protect the residents of New Jersey from increasing storms. D E P has observed, just like many other people, that storms are becoming more intense and larger over time. So what they did was they updated the size of the storms, the two, the 10, the 100-year. But then they also instituted another evaluation tool. They have the present storm flow rates, uh, the storm sizes, but then they have future conditions, which are even larger. I mean, the 100-year storm in the present condition is about eight inches. But in the future condition, it's 11 inches. Just, it's a lot more water.
Okay. I'm just going to object very quickly, Mr. Chairman. With regard to the application of the stormwater rules, the witness is reciting to requirements from the rules as he recognized we were grandfathered in. It is the D E P's own regulations which allowed us to be grandfathered in because the application was filed on or before a certain date. And I just wanted to state that for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Plaka.
Our, our position is that the D E P made a judgment on its view that the older rules apply in this case. We have appealed that and that is pending in the appellate division. It's not yet briefed. The appeal was just recently filed, challenging that decision. So we don't have a decision from the court yet as to whether D E P is correct as Mr. Plaka suggests, or whether it is incorrect as, as we suggest. So the issue will be litigated. As Mr. Walsh said earlier, the board does have an independent duty to understand and assess. And he's offering testimony to address that. In addition, this is responsive to testimony the applicant offered on its own initiative on these very issues. So although I respect Mr. Plaka's view, we obviously have different legal views of this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
I just wanted to speak to the fact of that, what they, I, I understand that they were grandfathered in and that's under appeal. But you could still run these storms. You could still take your model. It is not a giant effort. You just change a few numbers. And at least for the sake of the town, the communities downstream, you could give an idea of like, hey, how resilient is your design in the face of these storms? You know, to meet the reduction requirements, but you could show them what it could happen and give people some peace of mind, which I don't think would be a negative thing. Um, I have one last, uh, point I want to bring up. So we're looking at the construction plans, uh, submitted by the applicant. Let me get to the sheet number. I apologize. I did not, uh, change this at all. This is just looking at the plan. Looking at S P sixteen. This is a porous pavement area number nine on the plans. Uh, I wanted to point out, um, a practice concern I have here. Uh, if anyone can see where my cursor is going, can you see that line that says, has the S running through it? So that is a sanitary sewer line that is running through an infiltration basin. And I'm going to go to the section, the, the profile view, just to confirm it. Forty-eight. Again, this is the eight-inch S D R, this is the sanitary line. This is the port, this is the infiltration, uh, stormwater storage basin. They have the sanitary line running through it. I can't find anything explicit in the stormwater B M P manual that would prevent you from doing this, but it seems like a generally very bad idea to run a sanitary line through a stone storage system. It's going to fill up with water. Now in, uh, there are other rules about keeping stormwater infrastructure apart from sanitary lines. The risk is obviously sanitary lines carry raw human waste. You don't want a leaking sanitary system. These pipes, pipes get old. They leak sometimes leaking into a stormwater pipe and then suddenly you're discharging bits of raw human waste into your local water body. That's not very good. In fact, typically you need to keep stormwater pipes about 10 horizontal feet away from sanitary lines or one vertical foot away. And then there are conditions where, cause it's second chance, you can't do that. You have to encase the, the sanitary line in concrete to protect it from leaking to impacting the sanitary line. I, I think this line should be moved. I mean, now, again, I said, you can't find a rule against it, but to give you a better idea, another way to look at it, what I couldn't do is I couldn't take like, if I had a stormwater pipe that was, uh, sixty-four inches in diameter, it's a massive stormwater pipe. They happen. I couldn't run a sanitary line through it. That would not be allowed. And I don't think you should be allowed, they should be running a sanitary line through this. So this porous pavement section should be eliminated and they should find another way to store the water. Or they should move the sanitary line out from underneath the roadway. Now, the consequences of that, I think would be impact their flood would probably, sorry, the consequences of moving the sanitary line out of the roadway and into the, uh, grassed area or the vegetated area is I think there would be impacts on their flood, uh, flood hazard permitting and their wetlands permitting. They might need to get additional permitting to do that. But just as a general good practice, I think that line should be moved out of an infiltration basin. I just, uh, that is all my thoughts, but I just wanted to summarize that what I went through with you today was things that we found in our technical review of the report where we're concerned that the, the design is not going to be compliant with the New Jersey requirements, uh, design standards. And that lack of compliance is going to have a few problems. You're not probably going to get as much groundwater recharge as you want because the water is going to be held up and the water, instead of being infiltrated, like I explained during the mounding exercise for the hundred-year storm, it's going to go down the pipes. It's going to go out. And again, we're going to have much higher peak, we're going to have higher peak flows than what we're anticipating. And that's, it's kind of a, it's pairing that with the fact that the existing peak flow rates weren't calculated correctly and that they were elevated, that we're really risking having a, a flooding, can this, this site causing additional flooding downstream? Then it could, then it should, um, shouldn't cause any. It should have reduced loads and I'm worried that this site is going to generate more runoff than it does now. So.
Uh, does that conclude your presentation, Mr. Walsh?
Yeah, that's all my notes. So thank you very much. I want to thank the board for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Okay. We'll go around the board. Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions? Mr. Plaka, do you, uh, want to cross-examine?
Uh, no, the board can go.
Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, very much for this testimony, somewhat technical. But I don't know, the implications of what you're saying, um, can't be ignored. Um, and the implications of what your testimony brings me back to something you originally said about, it seems your recommendation is that we have to either go deeper or go wider. That is my takeaway from all of this. Or, and/or to add additional basins to this proposed plan.
I mean, deeper if you have the distance from the seasonal high, but wider when you don't, or additional basins. Yeah. So, which could impact the roadway layout, impact the permitting, impact the site layout in general.
And I do understand that the issue is being litigated, but it seems that, um, I appreciated what you said about the township. We want to be responsible as well. I understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
So you're saying that they don't have enough test pits to determine what's going on underneath where the basins are going?
For, for some of the basins.
For some of the basins. Some of the spots you, you showed us, they weren't really exactly underneath, right? T P four, I think was off.
It's off a little. There, there is flexibility. They don't have to have it in the middle.
Okay.
The, the flexibility is built there because sometimes when you're designing a site, you don't always know exactly where you're going to be.
Right, right.
It goes for the same way, just because it's on the site. It's 20 feet away. It's, it's still going to have that significance.
What season is the seasonal high water table?
So it's called seasonal high water table because it, it fluctuates, right?
Right. You're not supposed to take samples in July or August or Right, you're not supposed to take samples in July or August or vice versa, you are supposed to.
Uh, so you can measure
Right.
Um, seasonal high, basically whatever you want, but that's when you're usually modeling, because the modeling
With a D.
Modeling with a T.
Double T, gotcha, okay.
The, the modeling, I'll try.
Yeah, it sounds funny.
I got a South Jersey accent, I can't help it.
Yeah, me too, I grew up there.
Um, so the modeling, um, that's always there because it's been happening for eons, you know, it's stained. Now, what you can do is you can measure it from, if you want to try to use the water elevation, you can measure it from January through April.
Right.
Which in, uh, in the reports, they, they do, so. But if the modeling is higher, you have to use the modeling.
And DEP wants you to use the modeling?
Want you to use the modeling, yeah.
So did DEP comment on that?
Not that I can tell, I think, I think.
Experience, have you seen DEP ask for modeling with a double T?
I have, I have seen them.
Some cases, it depends on who's reviewing it?
Yeah, it depends on who's reviewing, but I mean, a lot of times the soil profiles also show it.
No, I understand, you pull out a sleeve of soil and you'll be able to tell where, right, right, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, you'll, um, here, you know what, let me, can I? This is, uh, from a presentation we gave for a different project, but let me zoom in. The language is different, where they usually don't ask for the modeling because we see where it says, um, for example, here, common, medium, prominent gray, gray is the color of the modeling that happens. It's the graying of the soil, so they'll, they'll see it in.
Where the water table is?
With, yeah, where the, uh, yeah, there's like spotting of it.
Okay.
So in my experience, they don't usually ask for it because a lot of times you fill it out anyway. The absence of it, when you're, this is a, an example, soil, soil boring log. So you would explain where it is to begin with.
And their soil boring logs didn't have this.
There's no mention of it.
Okay.
Here, I can.
Do we need to mark this last document as an exhibit? I don't, I, I'm asking Ms. McGovern for your view.
Well, you did refer to it, it was that one page, okay?
Okay. Can you go back?
Example of modeling, is that what it is?
From another project.
It's a sample test pit log.
I think that's it for me.
After ten.
Yeah, this, this would be. Okay, councilperson Scarpa.
Um, yeah, I'm trying to, um, get a little more of an understanding, I'm not sure if you summarized it. I'm trying to get a little bit more of understanding of the wetlands. I'm not sure if you summarized it or if it's quantifiable, but how will the flow of water be impacted by the disturbance of the wetlands? You showed, you know, how other wetlands that were not exactly the flow of water that were in a wider area.
Uh, you mean how the flows of the wetlands would be in, would
Impacted by more wet, where it flows now through the wetlands, you showed it, the green chart, yeah.
It has reduced.
More would be affected, so how would that, other wetlands would be affected, right?
Yeah, the, the wetlands would get less water.
So there's less water?
Yes.
Okay, and that would boil down to?
Yeah, we have another witness, uh, Mr. Sean being an engineer, I'm sorry, Mr. Walsh, being an engineer, gave the physical description. Uh, Mark Gallagher is our wetlands expert who will testify on another night, and he'll go into more detail on that.
Okay.
Uh, we offered Mr. Walsh's testimony just to show the statistical analysis
Okay.
as an engineer.
Thank you, and, um, I, I'm concerned about the responsibility of the municipality to, um, understand this and really quantify it. I mean, if you were sitting in our chair, Mayor McCartney, what would you be recommending our township do to get a better understanding of the real impact of this?
Yeah.
Um.
I would recommend additional, uh, soil testing. I would recommend that they split that POA two into two different drainage areas. They have to recalculate the existing time of concentrate, the time of concentration calculations. Basically, everything I called out, I think a lot of this needs to be reevaluated to ensure that it's not going to cause a flooding problem. So.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Guerino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. Walsh, thank you for being here tonight and for your presentation. I have a number of questions. One, what was the time period that your sampling was done?
Their sampling? Uh, it was, um, between April and, uh, January and April. It's, uh.
Okay, can you tell me, sir, what were the conditions prior to and during the testing your core samples? Was it rainy, snowy?
I, I don't know, I, we didn't take these core samples.
Uh, let me just clarify, uh, Mr. Walsh was referring to the applicant's work. So he wasn't personally there to observe the conditions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my other question is, did anyone, or yourself, you didn't, did anyone test the solubility of the wetlands as they currently exist now before, then based upon your calculations, when and if this project goes forward? Is there, was there a sampling of how the current conditions of the wetlands are now?
And I think that's
Are they, are they very soluble? Are they maintaining, you know, a set specific, you know, volume of water, the growth, the food, you know?
I, I think for Mr. Walsh's benefit, uh, your question is whether or not any testing of that nature is in the record. Yeah, I, I presumably from the applicant is what I, I assume the question is.
No, there's no testing that I know of.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for helping. Sure.
Um, so, taking a step back, i- is what you're showing us, um, tonight only relevant to the DEP's approval and whether or not it should have been granted? Or is some or all of the issues that you're raising specifically also important to the planning board? Because it impacts the drawings and the reports that are part of the application that's before us?
This explicitly impacts the planning board. Like, um, the planning board, the local ordinance also has the same, uh, peak flow rate reductions that are present in the New Jersey, uh, state regulations. So elevated peak flow runoff rates, um, the separation, uh, it's, for example, like the separation between the seasonal high water table, the bottom of the basin, that's in your roles too. The way that you're supposed to calculate the runoff, that's in your roles too. The New Jersey kind of made every state, every municipality update their local ordinance to meet. So you had to meet them, your ordinance has to meet the minimum, which is the New Jersey DP state regulations. Now, there are some cities that have stricter regulations, but yours have to meet their minimum. So it impacts on both levels.
Thank you. Um, on the seasonal high water table, uh, questions, the difference between the 2021 numbers and the 2024 numbers, can you explain a little bit about why they're different? And if it's correct to use the more recently gathered data? If there's a reason or requirement that the older data should have been used instead, et cetera?
Well, I, I don't think there's an issue with recent or, uh, much more recent will give you more information. The problem is, the difference is the locations. So I'm going to use a, this is previous pavement number six again, just as an example. So here's number four, but here's forty-three, and here's forty-two. Now, one of the differences is just like, the existing grade elevation here is six hundred and ten, but the existing grade elevation here is, uh, let me is, yeah, six oh five. So you're already, you're just fifteen feet different in elevation. So that's where you start seeing the complication of it. Um, that's why, again, the DP, when you, and this is a pretty large basin, it's a pretty large parking lot, it's all porous pavement, it's all going to hold. That's why the DP wants you to take more test pits because, especially when you have a large variation of grade, the seasonal high water table can change. Now, that, that's why I would, uh, when the councilwoman asked what I would recommend, I'd recommend for some of these more test pits to get a better, to understand the story of what's going on here. You know, I'm not saying, I don't want my testimony to ensure that, like, listen, everywhere the seasonal high water table is, you know, at six oh eight, it's obviously not, the ground drops, but we need to understand how it changes. So we don't, I mean, maybe half this parking lot, it's not going to work, but it does work on this half of the parking lot. Because they took the test pits on this side, but it's much higher over here. You see, you understand what I mean? So.
I got you. Um, in the cases where you suggest that the applicant has done the math wrong, not saying that that's the case or not the case, but where that's what you're claiming. Um, if you're correct, is the applicant now non-compliant with the new DEP required numbers or with the old numbers? In the cases where the math is different, or is it a mixture?
No, um, they would not be compliant with the rules that they are being held to. Not the inland rules, but the, the rules that they are being held to.
The ones that were in place that, that applied to their approval?
They're being applied to them, yes.
I think that's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilks.
Yes, in regards to the modeling, um, you're saying you didn't take any tests yourselves, you're reading everything from the applicant's, right?
I'm only reading theirs, we, we didn't go out there.
You didn't go out there at all?
No, I'm just looking at their information.
Came from basically the samples they had.
Absolutely.
Now, have, and this project is large, have you ever seen a situation where modeling didn't exist before or? Or is it just that uncommon, I'll bail you out with that?
I think it's very, very uncommon, I, and here's, in some places, um, let me give a, another example. Another way you can, look at this historically if you want, is you can go to, um, use, uh, I can't remember the government agency now, but, um, you can go to a website, they'll give you soil maps and will give you rough ideas of where seasonal high might be. It's another way, DEP will let you do that. Um, but it's usually very conservative and people don't want to do that. Um, so sometimes you wouldn't see modeling if you never hit seasonal high because sometimes seasonal high can be like twenty feet below grade, you know? What I think is unusual here is that when they, even in every instance where they found seasonal high, there was just no note of modeling. And sometimes the seasonal high was two feet below grade, like you would see something there. So the, it's absence of its reporting, I, we just, we just wonder about it, so.
Well, I'm wondering why DEP would let it go then, what would?
I have that same question.
And, but this is, but you're not saying this is uncommon or it is common or?
I think, I think it's very uncommon to see that. Um, I, I can't speak for what the DEP's decision making, unfortunately, I, I would love to know.
Well, I, I wouldn't take that as the fault of the applicant necessarily, it's kind of like, well, what's the explanation behind DEP's reasoning behind it? But I'll, I'll digress, um, more questions right now.
Thank you, Mr. Cadoza.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Walsh, just building off Mr. Alper's question on the disparities and calculations between yourself and the applicant, um, the numbers you presented, are, are they conservative estimations or?
Um, I think I'm using mostly their information, so I don't think it, I'm trying to be as conservative as they are. I, I'm not trying to, um, like, jack up the stats in the other way. I'm trying to use their slopes, their areas, I'm just trying to take what they, the way they analyzed it and just use the most updated method. I was trying to be as unbiased as possible, I wanted, so like, I, I didn't remeasure slopes, I was like, all right, if they told me it's five point four, I'm going to say it's five point four because I don't want to get into an argument about slopes, I want to see what they did, so.
That's helpful, just to know how to characterize that. Um, that's my only question, the other board members have asked some of my other questions, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Capra.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just one question, I'm not sure if this is for you, Mr. Walsh, or for us. Um, if, if the township is looking, uh, you know, making a comparison against our own ordinance, is it right to say that we're looking at the version of the stormwater ordinance that's prior to? I think we just adopted a new version in November, right? So it's the, is it right to say that it's the version prior to the one that was just adopted?
Why, DEP, um, rules that apply here, um, preempt whatever the town does.
Okay.
So if our rules now are stricter like the new DEP rules, but the DEP has already ruled that the old rules apply, I think our old ordinance also, it's the time of application law comes into play.
Okay.
Um, but there are other things that he's been describing, well, as you heard, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted, wanted to confirm that.
Ms. McGovern, I'm sorry, I, I, I won't address the point, but to say we reserve our view on the legal issue.
And then I understood you to say that, um, the testing was done at a few, at least two different times? Was, was it the same consultant that did the testing? Because it sounded like maybe there were, it was conflicted.
It was the same consultant, uh, I can.
And then.
It's a sore consulting engineers.
Okay. Thank you, and then, um, one last question, when you were working through the calculations, did you do a comparison on your own at Warner Road?
So I, um, to go back to the, uh, previous councilman's question, I didn't want to delve too far into like redesigning or reevaluating the site, I was just trying to use the numbers that they had.
Okay.
Because I didn't want to get into that argument, I was trying to evaluate their design.
Okay, understood, all right.
So I don't, I don't have those flows.
Okay, I was just curious, thank you.
No, no, no.
That's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzo, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, sir.
Okay, Mr. Martine, do you have any questions?
No questions, Chairman.
Mr. Plucker?
Yeah, I just have one question, I just wanted to confirm, is it your testimony that you reviewed every single page that my client submitted to the DEP in support of its permit applications?
I can't say that I reviewed every single page because there's a nine hundred page, uh, stormwater report, and a lot of it was modeling results that I, I did felt a need to look at, I looked at what I thought was important. But I tried to review everything, every single thing that they submitted, so.
But, but not every single page of the stormwater report?
No, I, I definitely did not read every single page. There's a couple hundred pages of just modeling results that I, I did not see.
Oh, can I just clarify, did you mean modeling with a T or a D?
He, he, I mean, I mean D.
I got a question. Oh, you got to go next, I'm sorry, you got.
Mr. Klein, go ahead.
So, Mr. Rizzo, I gotta ask you, what do you think of Mr. Walsh's testimony?
Certainly lots of impact there, and, um, honestly, any reviewer can come up with a number of different comments. As far as the soil tests, um, my opinion, if they were done in January to April, it's probably, um, the wet season, and that's probably why modeling, modeling wasn't discovered. I don't want to speak for the person who did it, obviously, that's my assumption.
So you're saying the water itself was at a level that they were confident that's what?
Between January and April, it's the wet season and
Right.
Seasonal high may have been the highest it would go to.
Okay, all right, so now let me pause you then. So, Mr. Walsh, I'm sorry, I don't need to go back and forth, but, so if they did the testing, January to April is the wet season, why do they need to do the modeling with a double T?
Well, um.
If, right, no.
Yeah, he's correct, it's done during the wet season, it's the correct time, but the modeling will show the genuine height. Because even if it's the wet season, you can have dry periods of time where the seasonal high would drop. Like, the water isn't consistent from January to April, it does move.
Okay.
And that's why.
You could and you could not, so it's really the person who did the testing, that would, that's the only person that knows that answer.
All right.
And, and that's why I had said, I think they should provide, provide some testimony just for clarification, you know?
Because the modeling may show that the seasonal high water table was correct or accurate?
It would show that.
It would show, it would be more accurate than the day they were there?
Yes.
Okay, and it, okay, and that's gone because those samples are destroyed?
Well, no, you could just, you could just dig holes again, it's still there.
Right, you'd have to dig new samples.
Yeah, you had to, you had to probably dig like ten feet to the left.
All right, you'd have to do it again, okay. All right, I'm sorry.
That's the, the value of it, it's always there.
Okay.
As far as location of tests, uh, that's, there's a lot of gray area there. I think that, um, someone has to use all the tests in the basin, that's what I primarily look at. Um, sure, I agree that as that natural grade elevation changes, that the tests could change also. It's, it's tough to say, you definitely need to use a test pit that's outside of the basin though.
But quantity wise, you said he was short one on one, two on another, do you think they have enough test?
That I'm not positive now, I'm going to, I took notice.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Hasp certainly verified it.
Okay.
As far as like the over excavation, there's porous, I guess there's a few porous pavement basins. I think that's natural practice, or if you don't have good soils, you certainly want to be sure. I think that's natural practice, or if you don't have good soils, you certainly want to be sure infiltrating. So it's good practice to over excavate and put back better soils.
And what do you think about the two V, two feet of 40% voids versus? I assume they did two feet, a hundred percent voids.
Yeah. I mean, um, again, I took notes, but we'll verify it again.
Check that. Okay.
That's, that's a very specific detail.
Right. Right.
I don't want to say one word.
No, in the calculation. Yeah. Okay. So you really, could you, at this point definitively agree with or disagree with Mr. Walsh? Knowing what he said, what you've seen so far, or is it really Mr. Hess that's the, because you?
It's really Mr. Hess.
Right. All right.
I'm not sure it's going to be one brand total yes or total no. Um, I think maybe some points are probably valid, but um, again, there's a, there's a ton of gray area with this stuff. And you could have 10 different people review and come up with 10 totally different sets of comments. I just see with the D E P, rights, the rules. Yep. So I think that they missed in their own roles or potentially missed. But, um, like I mentioned, where you know, take these notes back to passing. They'll verify.
What is, what do you think about the sanitary sewer line going through the, under the road where that, that's going to be?
Yeah, I agree. That's probably not.
Not a good practice to do it. Okay.
Um, and like.
Even if it's P, I thought I saw PVC pipe, even if it's PVC pipe, which doesn't leak as much, I guess, as concrete or.
Um, it could probably be either way, but you could even have groundwater entering into the sewer system.
Right. Right.
Downstream too. So.
Okay.
I think if there's an opportunity to relocate it, it should be considered.
Right.
Not sure if there is an opportunity, but, um, should be looked at. I also don't know the depth, like maybe the sewer system is deeper, is much deeper than the basin. And that's probably different.
Well, under the road, he showed that gray area and it was right in the gray area, which I assume that was the detention under the road, right?
Could be changed vertically. It could be changed horizontally.
Right. Right.
I think, I think you should be like that.
Yeah, that one. Yeah. It's not, I'm sure. Got anything else?
No.
Anything else, Mr. Rizzo? Mr. Rizzo, if the D E P misses its own regulations, what's the recourse by applicant or?
Talk ladder.
Sorry. If the D E P misses its own regulations, something that's on regulations, what is the recourse of the applicant or the objector?
What this board?
What is board?
It, I mean, it sounds like they've gone back to the D E P and I'm not sure what that stands. So I don't want to speak to them. Um, sure. The board is responsible, not the board, but the town is also responsible to review as well. And then it's, it's really the applicant's responsibility and they to own the design that, that they designed and signed off on. So, um, it says by the applicant and the town and D E P are, are equal responsibilities as far as their reviews.
That means the lawyers. Thank you. Okay. So at this time, we're going to have members of the public come up and ask questions of Mr. Wolf. Now, I, I just want to preface this by saying, hang on guys, hang in there a second. You heard how the board asked questions. The board did not testify. The board did not tell stories. Ask a question of the information provided, or I will ask you to stop speaking. So we have the attorneys agree going forward. Okay? Questions start with if, when, why, what, how, which, does it? But use the way the board asked questions as the way you should ask questions. Okay. And everybody please be quiet so we can hear the, everybody in the room can hear the questions of the person standing at the mic. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I think we have one microphone, so I'll give it to the member of the public who might have to give it back to Mr. Walsh.
Or you can come up. Come right up to the mic. Yes. Okay. Go right ahead, sir. We're, we're also going to limit questions to three minutes. So Joe, can you put a three minute clock up? Then don't worry about it. We'll keep them on. Okay. Go right ahead, sir.
Okay. Uh, you can hear me. Okay. Uh, I'm Victor Miskarti, M I S K R T I. And I have a question about this stormwater discharge. Like on one of your site, one of your site plans, you showed that there was, it was calculated to be one point of discharge, but you were saying there was actually two. So here's my question. Say, on one of your other site plans that you marked up, you were showing that a lot of water was not going into that system. It was going to the west, to the west, directly into the stream. And then to the east, to the right, directly like down that hill, down the mountain. So my question is, shouldn't, you know, that discharge be calculated as well? Like why just the two pipes?
So they, they're not calc, they're only calculating the flow off the disturbed areas. Um, basically it's a, it's a, it's a simplified. If you were looking further downstream, you should include that, right? But what they're basically doing is they're saying, we're going to hold that as steady. And we're going to show only the disturbed areas because that's where the change is going to be. So we should show the reduction of those changed areas. So they're not counting those other areas, but that, that is a totally normal thing they can do. It's just to kind of simplify the analysis. I think you would agree with me on that. But, um, yeah.
So it's a follow-up question that, um, on that one site plan that had the blue arrows, there were, there were no. Oh yeah. There you go. Oh, good. Um, there were no developed areas that were just going on into this stream.
No, those are being captured and rerouted to the storm sewer system. They, they do go to the wetland like down here. You see the screen? It goes to here, but it no longer gets distributed along here or along these upper air, upper wetland areas.
Okay. So I'm, I'm sorry. I just like, I understand. So you're, those blue lines, none, none of the developed areas is, is being missed. It's just escaping. I thought that's. They can't hear me. Okay. Sorry.
You need to repeat, he needs to repeat his question.
Okay.
Mic is on. If you just need to speak loud, this does not amplify your audio. See where you're speaking.
Okay. I, yeah, I think, I think I was looking the other way. That's why I think you couldn't hear. Okay. So there were no developed areas that were just running, the blue lines didn't show any developed area.
No, where, where it's developed, the design, it's, it's supposed to do that. It's supposed to capture the runoff and treat the runoff and reduce the peak flow of the runoff. So it doesn't go, um.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Walsh? Please come up, be identified.
I'll try to speak more loudly. Jessica Pearson, Verona. Um, okay. I have questions regarding some of the questions that the board asked. Um, the sanitary sewer, that's proposed or existing?
It's proposed.
It's proposed. So where does it go?
Look at the plan.
If you don't mind. It comes from obviously the buildings in, in mass and.
It's, it's the sanitary sewer line that's going to collect runoff, um, the sanitary, uh, waste from the, the proposed buildings.
From all of the four buildings. Do we know?
I'm looking at it right now. I didn't.
Okay.
I did the storm review. I didn't look at the sanitary too. It's definitely collected in from here. I, I think it is. At, at least it's collecting. It is going over the swell and it, and then it goes to a pump station and then I'm not, it, it gets pumped offsite.
So wait, it, and it runs underneath one of the basins, one of the.
It runs through the base.
Through and, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, is that modeling testing that you've talked about modeling with a T?
Yeah.
Is that found in the best management practices?
It's chapter five.
Chapter five, is that also?
Chapter twelve. Sorry.
Chapter 12 with the test pits?
Yes.
So that would be something that would be a best management practice.
So, yeah, let me take a step back. So, um, the New Jersey D E P, uh, best management practice, it's a, best management practices are referred to, it's like a specific stormwater term.
No, I'm talking about the manuals and the manuals that you follow.
You know, that, that manual is when it says B M P manual, saying best management practice. It's referring to like the stormwater infrastructure, like the basins or those are called.
Green infrastructure is a B M P.
Yeah. Yeah. Exactly. So, but yeah, that, that is explicitly listed in the, in the instructions of, hey, this is how you do a test pit and locate seasonal high water table.
Okay. So on the test pits, would you say that? Or would it be your opinion that there weren't enough done on the site?
It doesn't meet the minimum standard.
Okay.
Yeah. Based, based on their size and the way the D E P, uh, lays it out. So.
All right. Um, regarding the permeable pavers or the, the porous cement or the porous surface, do you know how many square feet, uh, that they have proposed on site?
I, uh, that's in the reports. I, I do not know that off the top of my head.
Um, but even under those or in that area, you were showing the parking lot a few minutes ago. Um, you showed that there was, from, from your perspective, you were then what would be compliant with D E P standards, um, test pits tested in that area to, to basically figure out where the seasonal high water table is. Yes?
Yeah. There, there wasn't enough test pits here.
Okay. And what would happen? If the pavement doesn't, if the pavement didn't have the capacity to infiltrate it? Cause I see from this that there are, are there under drains proposed on this, underneath this permeable pavement?
Uh, they, they have stormwater, they have a, uh, this one.
Under drains for like overflow, I guess. That would.
This is collection for the, um, for the storm, for, I think this is, I think these are under drains. I would need to delve up. No, I think they got rid of the under drains. I think this is just stormwater pipe to help convey the water, but it's not to prevent infiltration.
Is there a basin underneath it of any sort? A capture, a basin to capture?
Yes.
Runoff underneath the permeable pavement?
Yes. The stone layer underneath of it, um, that's supposed to capture and hold the runoff. And then there's a structure at the bottom that, um, has controlled openings that will force the water back being held and slowly released from underneath the pavement.
Okay. So if the capacity is compromised because the seasonal high water table is too high, or if the stormwater does not infiltrate at the proper rate, um, or there isn't enough depth for the stormwater to infiltrate, um, what happens to the, to the surface of that parking lot?
Well, um, the water could come back up through the porous surface because it's porous water. It can go, it goes both ways. Um, and then it would go through the pipes.
Would it, could it rather, could it actually, you know, upset it to a point where it actually breaks and pops up?
I don't know if I've ever seen that happen to be completely honest, but, um, the upward pressure is not something you would want on the pavement.
Right.
So yeah, that my analysis is going to go to that. I don't know if I want to say they could break the pavement, but, um, it's definitely not what you want.
So you could have ponding.
You just.
What if, what about in intensively cold weather? What happens then? When the water is.
The water is high, the, the ice could come up through it. It could, it could crack it.
So the ice could do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm going to have to ask you, we were over four minutes in. Thank you. Oh, thank you.
I have a lot more questions.
It's okay. We have other people asking questions too, but thank you very much. Okay. With the next person, the next person come up who would like to ask questions? Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, could you just keep it quiet in the back? The court reporter can't hear. And we can't hear sometimes because the mic is, uh, somewhat, uh, older. Go right ahead, sir.
Yeah, sure. Sure. My name is Mike McGlynn. I live in Lapis Circle and, uh, West Orange, Britt. Uh, McGlynn, M C G L Y N N. And, uh, I think I'm probably the closest property to the kind of Burke. You can even have tree land in our house after one of the storms. But anyway, uh, my question has to do with the storm runoff, um, probably just repeating the, the board members' questions about, um, what should be done, um, what, you know, what should be done considering the, uh, the new, new report about the, um, about the water runoff being a lot worse than, than, than earlier report.
And they should go back and they should, uh, use the new time, time of concentration, calculation calculations. Um, and reevaluate the site based on those newer, lower rates that they'd have to float, they'd have to meet, which means there'd be impacts to the site layout. Uh, I'm not going to speak to what, cause that, that's going to be their prerogative of how they have to move things around on the site, but basins would have to probably get bigger and wider.
Good. Thanks. But, um, you know, I think a lot of the neighbors are very concerned about the, um, uh, about the development and it's, I, I think it'd have a negative effect on our community if it's, if it happens. Thank you.
Thank you. So do any other members of the public have any questions for Mr. Walsh on his testimony? Please come up and be identified.
Hi, my name is Richard Mayer. Um, I've been a West Orange resident for a little under 20 years. I just want to cut straight to the chase. In your opinion, based off of what you described with the basins, and if there is overflow, could, I live in a community right below this, I'm vaguely terrace. Could there be runoff and damage to, not damage, but could there be flooding, possible flooding to our community, to our homes?
So I haven't, I haven't looked at that. Yeah. I haven't looked at that community. So I don't know about like storage capacities of your systems or not, but you know, increasing the runoff, the, the volume of the water and the rate that it's coming to your community. Yeah. It, it could increase flooding.
That's all I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can you say your name for the record, sir? Okay. Thank you. I love your.
Uh, I have actually two questions. First one I have is for landing board. Uh, who sup, does the D E P supersede the city or does the city as jurisdiction of the?
D E P supersedes the city.
So.
We still have to listen to all the testimony and make the decision.
So if, if something is in violation, let's say for instance, I'm hearing testimony about the D E P and if they're making an error, decision, does the city make a judgment on that or it has to go to court?
Sounds like it has to go to court, but we, we would, we would see if we could catch the error and the applicant would report it back to the D E P or the township would.
The other question that I have is we're talking about, uh, high water season. And I'm hearing this from January to Mr. Walsh.
Uh, through April.
January, April.
Yeah.
So what happened from April to December?
So.
High waters?
That's considered like a drier time. So there's less rain, um, or the water elevations are, are lower. Like, uh, you know, in the summer, it's real hot, doesn't rain. Those seasonal high water tables would drop. The D E P wouldn't want you to measure then because they say, oh, again, you would, that would be an artificially low time. They want you to look at it during the wet periods of time where it's the highest because that's going to, that's the most conservative point of view.
I don't want to take up all my time, but I'm a testimony as well as my neighbors. I'm actually at the lower part of the development. And we had a flood two or three years ago. I, we actually, my wife and myself took us, we were up on. I, we actually, my wife and myself took us, we were up all night to make sure that our basement wasn't flooded. So if the flooding is. The high water is not at that time, but yet we had high water on our street in that area. Many homes were flooded, many, many homes. From the uh Cunningham, Rosemont, Mayfair, et cetera areas downhill. It was affected by the heavy rains that was passed the high water season. That was dry season. And what happens if it rains for, sometimes we get rain for like three, four, five, six days. And does this, the, the, the uh, the catch basins, would that be able to catch all our water? From what I experienced, my family, it was not able to catch it. Right now, we don't have a development on the top, but if you put a development up there. Obvious, obviously is not gonna be able to to handle that kind of water. But if you look at your records, we have a problem even right now on Rosemont. Where the city has been in there like three or four times and trying to get that area taken here. So that's one of my concerns, and I just can't understand that if, it seems to me like the developer. Is getting.
Sir, sir, you can ask him a question about his testimony. You're testifying right now, so.
So I'm gonna ask the developer this question here.
Okay, he he's not testifying right now. You can ask Mr. Walsh about his testimony that he provided this evening.
So for instance, the, I'm hearing that a lot of rules and regulations are being bypassed. So the developer can have their way. In building this project.
I'm gonna go back to that characterization. Okay, sir. Not, that's not so. That's why we're here listening. To hear exactly what the developer has to say and what other people have to say. Okay, so we're all listening. Nobody's bypassing anything.
Last question that I have as far as uh. And for this, this, the city.
Okay, sir, sir, you can do this at the end. Right now, we're trying to focus on asking Mr. Walsh questions about.
I'm asking a question pertaining to to.
Mr. Walsh.
Right, to Mr. Walsh and what he said, his testimony.
You gotta ask him.
Was there uh? Did the city have uh some kind of a survey? At the lower level of that development here, for instance, like Rosemont Terrace, Cunningham. Mayfair Streets, et cetera, those neighborhoods, was, was any tests or anything conducted in that area?
Uh, no, typically you, you don't, you don't do additional stormwater modeling or analysis for it much further downstream you.
But it's affecting, it's affecting us. So if you're gonna have a project up there, then you have to have some kind of test. You just can't say, well, it's just gonna affect this area, so I'm not gonna suggest down here, but it's gonna affect the downhill neighborhood.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. We appreciate that. For your, do any of the member of the community have any questions? Please come up and be identified.
Walsh, I have a question. Susan Panulo.
Give me the name.
Uh huh, I am. Susan Panulo. P A N N U L L O. Fifty-seven Holton Lane in Essex Falls. Thank you. Mr. Walsh, question. In your November fifteenth letter. You show on page three of E M P soil test summary of that test. Can you explain that to us, please? There's a, there's a table you want.
Yeah, that's true.
Thank you. Take your time.
So this is a summary table of showing the area. Uh, I'm gonna start from the left, go to the right. Um, the left column is a list of all the basins or. Forest pavement systems they have proposed. Next column is their, so the infiltration area. Which is what the D E P uses as a measuring stick of how many test pits you're supposed to have, the number of test pits provided. The number of test pits that were required and whether or not they're compliant. Um. What I will say about this is, uh, this is actually ended up being a little outdated. I. Either I didn't get notified or something slipped. There was another set of, round of tests. That I didn't get to see. Those are the ones that happened in twenty twenty-four. Um, so they did more testing. So this, this shows the testing is less sufficient. Um, but they did additional testing in two thousand and four, so this, that was this table is just out of date. They still don't meet it, but it doesn't show it. It's not to the extremity that this table shows.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You do identify what page this is on the screen, so we have a reference.
It's page three. I'll ask a question. Is it page three?
It's page three.
Thank you very much. It's page three.
So sorry, I, page three of what document? I just wanna make sure.
The B M P soil test summary, correct? I'll ask a question.
It it was the letter that we wrote to the D E P in res- in uh.
Is that November fifteenth?
November fifteenth, yes.
Very much, November fifteenth. Thank you. Um, you know what? I have another question, but I I need a little.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public have any questions? Please come up and be identified.
Uh, name is S E T H, voice letter W E I S L E D E R. Um, my, my question is if we can go back to where you were showing some of those flow rates. And the potential for recalculation. You were showing a map um. With the actual buildings there.
Yes.
So I I know we focused a lot. On this page to the left. And then down towards the bottom. If we look at building D, um. That is the closest to the homes that have been testified before. That's about that corners, I think about a hundred and fifty to two hundred feet. Were you able to see any flow rates there down towards? The uh, the home that you see by number eight over there? And and down that slope, were there any flow rates that were calculated there?
So the.
In your.
The additional flow that would come from like the building. Uh, the, the way the roof is designed is gonna capture it through, you know, gutters and drains, and it would route it this way. Towards the previous pavement system, so it wouldn't be routing water towards this property. It would be routing it away in this direction.
Okay.
Means routing it to the left of the building?
To the left of the building, yes.
So, so you're saying once it's built, correct? But what about during construction and having to? If you're blasting into soil or rock and bedrock. It takes a while to get that structure and those flows going that one direction. How would that affect? Potential flow rates during construction down towards a neighborhood?
Um, I didn't.
Your opinion?
Yeah, I I didn't look at it in like the proposed construction uh condition. Um, they would probably have to have protocols during construction. Construction is a messy process. They would probably have to have. Protocols in place to try to prevent that kind of issue, but you are right. If you remove a lot of vegetation. Um, the water, the runoff could, uh, would increase. And if the contractors weren't careful, it could increase it in the direction that it's going now, so. Which, uh, if you look at the contours, it would rate uh runoff travels perpendicular to the contour, so it would flow this way.
That way towards number seventeen and number eighteen?
Yeah, now, again, I don't know what the system's gonna be set up in construction, so I don't, I'm just speaking generally here, so.
Right, so you haven't seen any reports, what could be set up during construction? To mitigate any potential issues, damage, high flow rates?
I didn't review the uh erosion control, sediment control plans, no.
I guess a point, Mr. Chairman, whether erosion control submitted? The board?
I I I believe they have erosion control plans there. It's just.
I can't, there's so many documents on.
Okay, it's outside my review.
Okay, no, thank you. That's all for now.
Thank you very much. Do any other members of the public have any questions to Mr. Walsh on his testimony? Please come up.
Good night. I have a question for Mr. Walsh. As far as with the. Deforestation of hundreds of trees. That's gonna be taken from that area. How would that affect? The um, the drainage as far as this, because you're not gonna have the trees there anymore. This plays a major part. In the observe, observe uh, observing the water.
Yeah, so um.
Is the catch bases and those things enough? To stop the major flooding, not only up there, but downhill?
So yeah, when they remove portions of. No, 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 I understand. It's, it's a large area that they're developing, so there, when they remove those trees. They're gonna change the landscape type, which means it's gonna generate more runoff, because forest doesn't generate a lot of runoff. Um, now, what's supposed to happen is the design of the system is supposed to um, understand that and. Counteract that, capture it in the stormwater pipes, uh, trap it in basins and slowly release it. What I was talking about today was that I think there were some flaws in some calculations. Where it's not actually going to do that, that, you know, it is their intent to do that. They're not trying to intentionally flood anyone. But I think there were um some miscalculations and just misobservations that. I think this design will, will increase uh flooding, will increase runoff that could trigger more flooding.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Walsh on his testimony? Please come up and be identified.
Mister Afrin, is um Miss Panulo your client?
As far as I know, Miss Panulo is not an officer of my client. She may be married. As far as I know, she's not an officer.
I'm a neurosurgeon. I'm not a client of his. You're not a client.
As far as I know, Miss Panulo is not an officer of We Care New Jersey. Who are? So that's, if that's that's.
We Care is his client, and if you're representing.
I don't represent Miss Panulo. Her husband is the president of We Care New Jersey. As far as I know, Miss Panulo is not an officer of my client.
I'm not an officer.
I have no client relationship with her.
Kind of, my understanding was that nobody, my understanding was that you were representing the organization. And that any member of the organization was therefore being represented by you and you were going to be asking the questions on their behalf.
As far as I know, it only has officers. It's not a member corporation. And I think we've progressed to the point, Ms. McGovern, where the wife of an officer is an individual in her own right.
Uh, believe me, I'm not challenging that. My, my point, my question is if. She's part of the organization, separate and distinct from her husband.
Allow me to ask a question one moment.
You ask my husband? No, you can ask her. Obviously, I'm asking, but I'm asking Mister Afrin, who he represents. Go ahead.
I am not asking Mister Panulo about his wife. I'm asking Mister Panulo a question about the structure of We Care New Jersey. We Care New Jersey is not a member corporation. It's a five oh one C three, but not a member corporation. Five oh one C four, it does not have members. It only has officers. So although I understand Ms. McGovern's question that perhaps the wife of the president might well be a member, it does not have members. It only has officers.
Just officers, no members.
That's correct. It has trustees, no members, yes. As far as we know, Miss Panulo is fully an independent person in her own right.
Okay, well, that's a matter of debate sometimes, but we won't go into that. Okay, may I continue?
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Appreciate the break. Um, Mr. Walsh, was the plan you and I discussed? The original plan that was submitted?
Uh, this plan has changed a few times um since it was originally submitted to the D E P.
Thank you. Did you review the previous plan?
Uh, I've reviewed a, a few different versions of this plan.
So I guess the answer would be yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. What was the difference?
Um, the stormwater, uh, oh, I, I, I wanna say I reviewed the stormwater portion of the plan, so I don't wanna. Pretend like I observed anything else, reviewed anything else, but um. The stormwater system uh became more complex as they kept developing it. Um, originally, I don't think there was any previous pavement systems involved. Um, basin number two was drastically different, I believe basin one was different. Um, it's a, it's a little while ago, so I can't quite remember all the changes, but it, it looked like a different site.
Okay, and and do you know why it was withdrawn?
I don't know if it was. I don't know why they updated their plans. Um, I, I might, I don't wanna guess why.
Okay, I won't go on with that because we don't have much time. So earlier you referenced A C S page nine. And we pull up, I believe it would be page uh, page three of the A C S report. So you that, I'm, I'm interested in, in uh, looking at paragraph number two.
Yeah.
This.
Uh, here we are, uh, page nine.
Thank you. And then we want page three, so we had referenced page nine earlier.
Yes.
But what I'm interested in looking at, you can find page three.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And I think if you wanna save some time, it would be paragraph two, correct? I think that's the one we're interested in. Looking at.
All right, uh, this is, this under methodology?
No, maybe not. You know what? I'm not sure which paragraph. I'll have to take a look back. I'll let somebody else have an opportunity to come up while I take a look and see which page it was. It's, I'm sorry, which paragraph it was. I don't wanna waste time. Okay, thank you.
You, do any of the members of the community have any questions for Mr. Walsh on his testimony? Please come up and be identified.
Mike Brick, nineteen Colony Drive West, West Orange. Am I allowed to appear as the chairman of the Environmental Commission or a private citizen right now?
Private citizen asking Mr. Walsh questions.
Okay, I am a private citizen. Mr. Walsh. Um, you've discussed the criteria from the E P A on the old standards and the new standards. Do you ever forecast in the future what standards will be as the environment continues to deteriorate? Say in ten, twenty, thirty years?
Um. What do you mean forecast?
Um, we, you've seen, the changes in the environment will only get worse. And so we've seen the E P A change their standards from five, six years ago to now. If you forecast another five or six years.
He's talking, he's referencing the D E P.
Yeah.
Is that what I said?
No, you said E P A.
It's okay.
The D E P. Could you forecast another five or six years or, and then another ten or fifteen years? For the standards that you're looking at for stormwater runoff? Is that possible?
Um, that wouldn't, that involve like a statistical model that I don't think uh, I would be qualified to talk about. But I will say with forecasting the inland flooding rules, that's what the D E P tried to do. They wanted to forecast a hundred years into the future, and they provided uh storm sizes for. What we can predict now based on data, what it'll look like a hundred years in the future.
So the data that you're talking about, the new standards that are not being applied to this project. Are standards from five or six years ago that had nothing to do with the hundred year project? At, at what point five or six years ago were they projecting the stormwater runoff?
Um, you mean when they were projecting like future storm sizes?
Yeah.
That was when they installed the latest rules for the, which were the inland flooding rules, and I believe that was. Um, it was two, I can't remember the date now unfortunately, but it was two or three years ago. They, the, that rules had a lot of different dates with it and how they rolled it out, so.
If you looked at the old standards versus the new standard. And looking forward to our future with the. and looking forward to our future with environmental degradation, would you say that the, the new standards, which you're not even going by, would be woefully inadequate for the future in 10, 20, 30 years?
I don't know if I can speak about what the, what's going to look like in 10, 20 years comparing the new standards. I haven't. That's like an evaluation of like the DEP rules that I'm not really, I don't, I don't think I could talk to at this point. Are you trying to imply that they're going to be even worse?
Absolutely.
I haven't like reviewed data to like give that kind of a professional opinion on it. So I don't, I don't really think I can comment on that.
Yeah, the Army Corps of Engineers, have you taken that into consideration of what they're planning to do downstream on the Roway River in the Orange Reservoir? That's a, that's an approved future project for stormwater runoff?
No, I haven't seen any of those plans.
Are you aware that the topography of this land supplies water to two river systems, the Canoe Brook and the Roway River system?
It was, yeah, that was my understanding. Yes, there was headwaters of those two water systems.
Have you looked at the, the percentage of water that's running off to each of these two different systems?
I mean, from this section itself, you mean?
This project, you know, this mountainside.
I mean, I think I discussed it a little bit with how, what was draining through those wetlands that are technically the headwaters of that area.
The wetlands are, are which river system?
Well, this is the Canoe Brook, I think on the left, and then I, I think, well, I'll be honest, I was focused on the site. I don't know exactly where these feed into and what they are, the headwaters are at my. The storm analysis stays pretty close to the site, and that's where I was trying to put my focus on, so.
Would it be possible for you to do that evaluation?
But he didn't testify to that, so let's. He didn't testify to that. He didn't testify to doing that evaluation. You can ask him a question about what he testified to.
Okay, fine.
Okay, but for right now, you've used up your time and a little bit more, and I want to thank you very much.
Oh, you're more than welcome.
Okay. Do any other members of the public have any questions for Mr. Walsh on his testimony? Please come up and be identified.
Jessica Pearson again. Thank you. That's okay.
We can rock and roll. It's good.
Okay. So picking up on a couple of other things that were said by other members of the public, you looked at their calculations for peak flow.
Yes.
Okay. And you looked at them under present conditions in its natural state?
Yes, because that's the, the benchmark that's used against the proposed conditions.
And then you looked at their calculations based on the two 10 and 100-year storms?
For the existing conditions, yes.
For, under existing, and then their proposed conditions in various states of development, depending on which portion of the site and which watershed they were talking about, right?
Yeah, I didn't try to recalculate what they did for the proposed conditions, but I was measuring against like the new, the way the, I would call it the revised peak, existing peak flow elevations.
So when you examined their calculations, you had stated that we, we know that they're not running calculations for the future for year 2100. We know that they're not running calculations based upon the new rainfall totals currently. But going back to the 2021 stormwater ordinance before the new rainfall totals were ratcheted up for Essex County, accordingly, were their proposed conditions meeting the muster of that ordinance? Or did they fall under even there?
I think based on my analysis and finding some of the design miscalculations that they're not passing that.
So they didn't pass 2021, forget about 2024.
Yeah, no.
Okay. Can I ask you to go, I don't know if it's O9 or O10?
Can you describe it to me and then I'll, I'll find it?
We were talking about time of concentration. You were talking about it.
Yeah.
It's a map.
I think it's here, so.
I, I guess what I was trying to understand is you were talking about that they artificially increased the time of concentration?
They decreased.
They decreased it. Okay. Tell me what that really, I'm trying to understand and get my head around this. If they they decrease the time of concentration, then when they take all the trees down, the water can rush and it won't look like a big deal, right? I'm, I'm just saying.
I mean, that's implying like some malcontent. I'm not saying anything that, like that happened, but like, yeah, that generally that it's higher so than when they change the landscape where it's going to generate more runoff, it's easier to come down.
So I, I'm just trying to get this straight. If you artificially reduce the time of concentration.
Yes.
Okay. And you see the water rushing down a, a slope? And now there's not even anything to slow the water down because the trees are gone. It's going to look like fast time of concentration. I'll say fast. The water rushes fast. And then in your proposed conditions, it won't be such a shock when there's buildings and no trees.
Yes.
So it'll just be a little bit, maybe a little bit faster, but we're going to put basins in that'll hold and contain some of that water.
Yes.
And so was your final thing where you showed that table and you said their time, was that the time concentration or?
That was their peak flow rates.
Okay, and they were, you said increased or decreased over and above what the site started out as? I hope I'm not confusing. I'm confused, so.
It, it, I gave a very technical testimony. I appreciate everyone's patience with it.
I don't know where you're, yeah, there it is.
Yes, this is the table we were referring to.
From their stormwater.
Well, we were saying, I, I was talking about the two-year storm and the 100-year storm. Where with the 100-year storm, they, they calculate a peak flow runoff of 83. We.
Eighty-three.
It's cubic feet per second.
Thank you.
Which is a lot of, it's a big flow. It's a big area too. We calculated a peak flow rate of 37 cubic feet per second, which is a lot lower than this. And what was really to note there was that with their proposed peak flow runoff rate was actually higher.
Higher than?
The higher, it was, was higher than what we calculated as existing. So it was actually almost two cubic feet per second. Which is also.
That when the changes occur on the site, it won't show as a change. It'll just be like, oh, we're keeping everything. We're, we're, well, they're saying they're improving.
They're saying they improve, but what we're saying is in reality, you're, is you're actually going to see it get worse.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Walsh? Please come up and be identified.
Seth Weissletter. We, we're, we're focusing a lot on, on the flow rates coming down, where they go, but I, I think at the beginning of your testimony, we were talking about the storage, soaring of the water in the basins. So if I'm correct from what I understood, the basins, because they're more, well, higher flow rate, I guess, depending on where they are, they fill up. They're going to be filled up to almost capacity based on potential matling issues and not having the correct table. So potentially what, I think what you were trying to say is that the basins need to be deeper or recalculated. Is that correct?
Yeah. I wouldn't say deeper, but they would probably have to be wider because the problem was that they were going too deep and they were running into seasonal high. So that was eating away at their storage. So you'd have to make them shallower and wider to get more, because if you can't go deep, you have to make them wider to get the same volume you need.
And if your opinion based on the plan that you see, if they're not wider, what happens?
I think you're going to have increased flow rates. You're not going to meet the required reductions. You're going to have increased flood, storm runoff coming from this site, and you're going to risk flooding downstream.
And, and, and then in your opinion, looking at the overall plan of porous pavement, basins, are there, is there enough of that or does there need to be more? I mean, we're talking about widening things, but there's, do there need to be more and more porous pavement and things in different areas?
Needs to be more volume. So you're going to have larger basins or you have more basins or more porous pavement, but in general, you need more of it to hold more of the water back to meet your flow reduction requirements to make sure you don't flooding downstream, because you're going to have a lot more water coming. So you need to be able to hold it back so you can slowly release it over time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to close that portion of the meeting and we're going to take a five-minute break. Thank you. Here it comes. Thank you. Uh, on the record. Mr. Ephraim, you have the floor, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one follow up question for my client witness, but I don't know if the members of the public had concluded, um.
We're done with the public, you're up.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Walsh, you were asked a question. Well, I defer to the chair.
I'm sorry? Okay, ma'am, come up. Go right ahead.
Hi, Sarah O'Farrell Verona. Uh, Mr. Walsh, good evening. Um, I heard all the trees will be cut down and I also heard all the natural runoff will be diverted from the wetlands on site. So does that mean the wetlands will then cease to exist in their present state? As natural stormwater management for the surrounding neighborhoods?
I'm just going to object. I don't think there was any testimony that all of the trees would be cut down.
Five thousand nine hundred trees.
Okay, I think you can clarify what was testified to? To answer her question.
Uh, I don't recall the, the witness spoke to cutting down trees, but in the record through other witnesses, there has been testimony about trees being cut down and we offered.
But right now, I think she's focusing on the wetlands and Mr. Walsh did testify to the wetlands. And that was happening to them, but the amount of water, stormwater that he said would be, uh, moved away from them.
What, what I'm pointing out is that in the record from other witnesses, there's testimony about trees being cut down. So I don't know the focus of the member of the public's question, but there is other information in the record about trees being cut down. So I think it's proper for a question to incorporate that, even if this witness didn't necessarily testify to it, depending on the nature of the whole question.
She can review previous record. Right now, Mr. Walsh is going to talk about stormwater and we'll direct the question to stormwater only.
Should, should we ask the question be repeated? Because I don't remember what was said.
I can repeat.
Please.
I saw that the water on one of your slides will be diverted from the wetlands on site. So does that mean that the wetlands then will cease to exist in their present state? As natural stormwater management for the surrounding neighborhoods?
So, um, I showed that, uh, the what the, uh, on the wet left side of the plan, that wellen will lose about 25% of the drainage area. On the right side, it was about 33%. Um, I'm not, uh, I'm a math and engineer guy, so I
Yes.
cannot speak specifically to the ecological results of that. Uh, I think we have testimony coming later to speak directly to your question, so I don't want to. I, I can barely keep a house plant alive, so I don't want to.
I understand. Thank you. Um, great, so. If, if Mr. Walsh, if this is built in the neighborhood, oh, I can't, okay. With a property of this size consisting of wetlands and a high seasonal, high water tables, in addition to removing all those trees, which I mentioned previously. Uh, is it really possible to design a stormwater management system? That will retain enough water for this large scale project and not negatively affect the surrounding homes, homes downstream and the surrounding wetlands?
I haven't done, I'm not doing the design of this. I just reviewed someone's design itself and I found some calculation errors. I wouldn't go as far to say that they couldn't do this. But like, I didn't really look at it on that like kind of scope, if you know what I mean. So I don't.
Okay, what, what about if Mr. Walsh, if this is built and the, and the system that's designed? Doesn't work as planned because the calculations have, are outdated? Who is ultimately responsible for the flooding? Or is? I don't know if that.
That seems like a more of a law que- I mean, I would refer to the MS four permit, but I'm going to refer for legal liability. Again, I don't want to.
I, I don't think I would comment on it at this point. Um. It, it is a partly legal question, partly a practical question, but.
So let's leave it in.
Yeah, I don't think I would comment.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, Mr. Walsh, you had a follow up question. I'm sorry, Mr. Ephraim, you got a follow up question for Mr. Walsh?
Uh, Mr. Walsh, uh, I believe a witness was Dr. Penulo, I believe. Uh, asked you a question that led you to say that um, there was a later set of figures submitted by the applicant to DEP that when you wrote your November 15th letter, you had not yet had a chance to see. Do you recall that question and answer?
Uh, yes, I remember that, yes.
Now, could you clarify to what extent though your November 15th letter did not address that additional information that your testimony tonight has?
My testimony tonight includes that additional, uh, soil testing. I I've updated my findings after I've been able to review that document. So what I'm saying now is includes those reports, that report.
Is it fair to say that though your November 15th letter did not address that because you had not yet seen it, that your testimony tonight does?
Yes.
Thank you. That was the extent of my follow up question.
Thank you, Mr. Packer.
Just, just really quick, uh, can we just confirm for clarity of the record? The additional soil testing that Mr. Affron and the witness were referring to? Is that the additional testing that was performed during the pendency of this hearing that was testified to by Langen? At the, at the more, more recent meeting?
I, I will leave it to the witness to answer. I'm not familiar personally.
I just want a clear record.
I, I wasn't there for when Langen spoke, so I'm, I, I can tell you the dates of the reports.
Yeah, I was going to ask that. Can you just identify the additional testing reports that you were referring to in your testimony?
February 12th, 2024, April 4th, 2024.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you. You declined.
Yes, so that chart that you had.
Which chart?
The, I'm going to try to describe it. It had the different types of
Page three.
Detention, uh, no, yeah, there you go. That's the one, page three. Thank you. You had a, you had a bunch of testing things that were missing, a certain number. Yeah, that. So that column, now you're saying the numbers less. Do you know how many less?
It's less. I provide testimony if you.
You said one or two instead of three or five?
Yeah, here, one, one moment. I discussed this earlier, but base BMPs number five, six, eight. No, sorry, uh, five, six, eight, nine, 10 are one short. BMP seven is too short.
And the rest stay the same?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or the, the rest are compliant.
Oh, so can we get a new table?
Yeah.
It's like, yeah, okay, it's not that, I thought the no was still going to be in the right column. Okay.
Between now and the next meeting, we'll try to have an updated table. And just for the record, what we're referring to is page three of Mr. Walsh's November 15th letter.
You're done. Thank you.
All right, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. We appreciate the board having heard our witness.
So this meeting will be carried to the special meeting on March 19th at 6:30 PM in Town Hall. In person. And no additional notice will be required. The next regular meeting of the planning board will be March 12th, 2025 at 7:30 PM will be Zoom. Motion to adjourn.
So March 19th?
Yeah, you can't make it in Lori camera.
March 12th is regular. All in favor?
We're in, we'll sit together.
That's right, yeah.
All in favor of the The eyes have it. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, people on Zoom. Have a wonderful evening.